States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you had a chance to look over the agenda? And your choices are to accept it or we can amend it. If you accept it, I need a motion to approve the agenda. And if you want to remove something or add something, we can amend it and approve it.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Have a motion to approve the agenda, need a second.
I'll second.
A second by Robbie. Discussion, start with Joe Neal voting.
Yes.
And Phillip.
Yes.
And Rex.
Yes.
And Robbie.
Yes.
And Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
And I vote yes. I've seen it done 14 different ways.
Here's number 15.
Alright, okay. You know, I've seen it done, we're the acting chair, but I've also seen it done-
Do you have a preference?
Yeah, what you're gonna do.
Well then at this time, I will assist you with the selection of the chair and the vice chair for the Carroll County Board of Supervisors in that order. The procedures that we will follow will be these. I will ask for a nomination for each seat. Once a name has been placed in nomination, I will ask for any other nominations for that seat. If there is another nomination, I'll ask for you to cast a vote for the person, for the people, in the same order as the nominations were received, and a majority vote will prevail. If only one name is placed in nomination, I'll still ask for a vote and the vote will be recorded. Are there any questions? So nominations then are now open for the seat of chairman of the Board of Supervisors of Carroll County, Virginia.
Mr. Administrator, I'd like to place a nomination, the name, Robbie McCraw. He was vice chairman and-
We have Robbie McCraw placed into nomination. Are there any other nominations?
I move that the nominations close and we accept Robbie by acclamation.
Second.
Works for me, I'll say.
Okay. Robbie McCraw, by acclamation, is the new chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Congratulations, Mr. McCraw.
Thank you all.
Nominations are now open for the seat of vice chair.
Mr. Administrator, I move that we accept Rex Hill as vice chairman.
Um, so move-
Placed into nomination.
Are there any other nominations beyond Mr. Hill?
I move that nomination is closed and we accept Mr. Rex Hill by acclamation.
Congratulations, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Next on the agenda is the adoption of the rules and procedures. Has everyone had a chance to look at the rules and procedures? Do I hear a motion to accept the adoption of the rules and procedures?
I make the motion to adopt the rules and procedures excluding the Code of Ethics. I'm not sure whether they'd be voted on the same or not. I'd like to table the Code of Ethics till next month.
I have a motion by Rex to adopt the rules and procedures. Do I have a second?
I'll move.
I have a second by Joe Neal. Let's vote. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
So that we accept the adoption of the rules and procedures. Yes, sir. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me of that. Uh, next is the Code of Ethics and Rex has expressed that he'd like to table that till the, pardon, February meeting. Do I have any opposition to that? And that's okay for us to do that?
What's the motion and?
Okay. Let me have a motion then to table the Code of Ethics to our February meeting.
I so move.
Rex has made a motion to table the Code of Ethics. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe Neal.
Now, this is not forever, is that what you-
That's right, just till the next meeting.
We're not gonna do a way of things, right?
No, we're gonna keep our ethics, just do it at the next meeting. Accept votes, Joe Neal, uh, Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
If they attend that as to change them, I hope we get a copy of it before-
You, I think, I think that's-
And I, and I-
Go ahead. And I vote yes. Alright, the PSA committee appointments, uh, do we have three that we have to have appointments for? That'd be Dr. Littrell's, uh, the Poppers Gap, um, Phillip McCraw's in Fancy Gap, and Joe Neal Webb's, and Laurel Ford.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we appoint these three individuals to the positions that are open on the PSA.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint the three members to the PSA committee. Mr. Webb?
I don't really understand. You're appointing us to be on them?
Unless they want to assign someone else, is that correct?
Yeah.
They can, they can take the option to assign someone else to that position for them, to represent him.
I'd like to go that route, so-
Alright, withdraw my motion.
I think it's typical that each person from that district appoints a lot into their position, as opposed to one person doing it.
That's kind of what I have been, what we done last time, I think.
So do individual motions?
Just do an individual and, uh, we'll start with Joe Neal since he brought it. Do you have someone you want to appoint?
I'm not prepared today to do it, but I, I'd rather have somebody else sit on the board than, than myself.
Okay, sure thing, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate, or appoint Dr. Littrell to the PSA board.
Okay. I have a motion, is that acceptable with you?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead. Any other discussion? Take a vote, Mr. Webb?
Oh, yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
I'm saying-
Mr.-
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And I'll make the motion to, uh, you know, make Mr. McCraw to the PSA.
Mr. Phillip McCraw?
Phillip McCraw. Sorry.
Um, do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second motions.
Well, any other discussion? Vote, Mr. Webb?
Yes, that's fine.
Mr. McCraw?
I abstain.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And I vote yes. The next item on the agenda is to set the meeting time, date, and locations. We typically meet now on the second Monday of each month at 6:00 PM. Uh, I think our actual executive session starts at 4:30. And do I have a motion to remain the same or to make changes?
I move that we keep it the same.
I have a motion by Dr. Littrell to keep it at the same times?
I second.
Second by Phillip. Any other discussion? Mr. Webb?
Uh, yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, with the comment that everybody understands that we could have an extra meeting or a call meeting and we could adjourn to some other point in the county. I vote yes.
And I'll vote yes. And thanks for those comments. Does anyone have anything else we need to discuss before we adjourn?
I think we should have another meeting in January to discuss the budget. I know next Monday's a holiday. I don't know if anybody would want to be here on holiday or you want to do it, but next Monday after that, we need to kind of get started on the budget. Does anybody have a preference?
I don't have a preference. I, I know staff will be here next Monday, correct? Okay. Well, I, I know that, and I'd hate to do that though, to, being a long weekend and a holiday, I'd rather stuff a different day other than-
The budget is on the agenda tonight. We can come up with a date before this evening and-
That sounds good to me. Everyone okay with that? We'll just do that then. I have no other, uh- Go ahead.
The, Mr. McCraw, how's the best way to get in touch with you? By telephone right now?
Right now, yeah.
Okay. And, uh-
After we adjourn, can I get that number?
I think we'd all like to have it, actually.
You ready now? Seven, fair, fair?
I'll give you that.
Okay.
You mean one else? Anything else?
What are these?
It's yours from this one.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion for adjourn?
I move.
Excuse me, I had two, so we got a motion by Dr. Littrell and a second by Mr. Martin to adjourn. Joe Neal?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Dr. Martin?
Adjourn to fourth-
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Before y'all go into your pile of stuff that's in front of you, there are two additional resolutions that we were gonna ask to add to the agenda this evening. I'll give you a copy later, just so you can be aware of them and know what they are and the places where they probably all pass. Whether it's for renaming a sector rather than the others for law enforcement, appreciate
Thank you all, so you just seen it at 4:30? We'll call this meeting to order, it's 4:30. I guess, closed session is what we have first.
And, Mr. Chairman, we, we have some items for closed session under section 8.1, personnel issues, 8.5, economic development, and 8.7, and 8.8, consultation with legal counsel.
Make a motion, we go into closed session reference to Virginia Code, section 2.2, page 3711, A1, A5, A7, A8.
I have a motion, first enter closed session. Do I have a second?
A second motion.
Have a second from Mr. Martin, we'll vote. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Order please. I need to get a motion for us to come out of closed session back into open meeting, please.
I move that we come out of executive closed session and into an open meeting. I'll have a second.
Motion and a second by Rex. I need to take a vote. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I need to, uh, I certify that only public business matters awfully exempt from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in closed session, to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies. Do I have a motion to accept, to certify?
I make that motion.
A second?
A second.
Thank you, too. Take a vote, Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
I so certify.
Yes. Martin?
I so certify also.
Thank you all. For all rise for the pledge and invocation, Bob, if you will lead us in prayer, please.
Okay. Heavenly Father, I always feel a little weak in looking over my shoulder when I say a prayer out in public because I know that I've got lots of shortcomings. Father, I ask forgiveness for my many, many sins. Father, I ask that you bless every person here, every family represented. I ask for travel mercies for everybody as they journey home tonight. Father, as we launch in, out into the deep water on some of the things the county's involved with, we pray that you're there and you're the rudder on our ship and leading guide and direct us. In all of this, we ask, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you all for coming out in this little stint of bad weather that appears that we have. At least it is warming up, so that's a good plus to that. I would like to thank the board for appointing me chairman, and I appreciate that, and hope that I can do the job as well as Mr. Martin done it in the past year or so.
I'm sure you can do better, okay.
Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'd like to pull out section B of consent agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Well, that was an approval for the entire agenda, and then we'll get the consent agenda. Okay, that's okay. Do I have an approval to accept the agenda?
I make that motion.
Have a motion, and have a second, but Phillip? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes. And now we'll go onto the consent agenda, and you say you want to pull out section, section B?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the removal of section B?
So move.
Have a motion by Dr. Littrell, and a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Alright, do you-
Now just give us, you give us a brief synopsis of each one of them, I may have a question or two.
Sure.
Wherever it doesn't matter, wherever.
Alright, item number one is a budget adjustment for the day reporting program. Because we have more than 15 applicants, we're gonna be charged to the consulting services a little bit more, and they're testing hits for drug testing. Basically, the day reporting program, as you may be aware or not, is a diversion program, so they don't go into the Neuro Valley Regional Jail. So it ends up saving the county money by diverting them and actually using them as community service within the community here. So where the sheriff has asked for an additional appropriation with some of those savings.
Do we direct those cops back to the, to the person of day reporting?
To the, to the, I guess, the defendant or fellow?
There's a fee that they are charged.
And I think we've had drug tests in the past, but we do not have drug tests anymore, we have to pay for them.
But it's kind of pays for itself, so to speak.
Yeah, it pays, it pays the majority.
Yeah, but I mean, the defendant is paying for drug tests.
Yes.
Yeah, and we just need to purchase more, alright.
Okay, that is number one. Number two is the appropriation for SRO grant that the Sheriff's Department has received. And my understanding is there's a 10% match on this grant, and half of the 10% match is gonna be paid for by the school system, and half of it is gonna be absorbed within the Sheriff's Department budget. So it's an additional appropriation, but 100% of that will be offset by the revenue that we receive. Item number three, they're with me as I'm trying to open these up. I believe is the load of juvenile detention has run over. And in these budget approval items this year, what I have tried to do is instead of increasing the overall budget amount, is to find those savings within the budget, so our budgeted expenditures are hopefully staying the same and not increasing the budget. So you'll notice that this one says budget transfer. And what we are using here is items that we had budgeted in the contingency to cover the excess cost of the juvenile detention bills. Okay? Any questions on that one?
Which contingency does that come from?
It's in, it's in non-departmental, 90, from the very last page.
Wait, are you gonna session when you put money back into that?
Yeah, one of your buckets for this. Do you want the attempt number, Rex?
Nah, I just, it's just-
I have it right here.
One of those, one of those areas down at the bottom, right?
It's, it's in 91-500-5610.
It has 40,000 in it, basically.
It's 40,000, yes, but we're gonna add some more money to it in just a minute. Okay, the next budget approval item is for LODA. It's actually a combination of two changes that we've had. One is an implementation fee that VRS charged. They are now having to make a determination on whether or not a line-of-duty accident that happened in the line-of-duty, so they charged a one-time implementation fee to everyone statewide. That total cost was $1,840. It was a surprise to us. The next one, the invoice from Bay Corp. O'Bridge. VRS also made a determination that anyone who is currently receiving benefits, health benefits, from LODA have to participate in the state health insurance program. VRS thought that that was gonna be a savings to localities, and unfortunately, as you can see by the $10,565 bill that we were hand-delivered from Bay Corp. on Monday, it actually increased the overall cost of the health insurance benefits. And some people who are on those line-of-duty health benefits say that they, the benefits are less than what they had on their own plan. It used to be that you could go and select your own plan and they would reimburse you the cost of it, now they're saying, no, you need to participate in our plan, and this is how much it costs, and it was more expensive.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, that is gonna be offset by the personnel contingency in that same department line item, 91-500. Okay, the next budget approval item is for the vacancy within the Treasurers Department. Whatever was remaining after all expenses have been paid for that position, the vacancy savings of $21,4162 has been moved into the other contingency, increasing that amount.
I thought that we're gonna utilize this.
She had some part-time, she had some part-time expenditures for December, but it's my understanding that that was-
That won't be after that. I mean-
Now, in the event that they have to use it, we can move it back from other contingency into the Treasurers Department at that time. Okay? The item, the next item is the vacancy, similar, very similar in circumstance, vacancy in the admin office, moving that vacant money down to the contingency. In the event it's not filled, and there is a plan to fill that right now. The next budget approval item is an additional allocation for the Law Library. We are currently under contract for online access. That contract does not expire for another year, I believe, and that, the cost of the online services in the Law Library is costing us more than what the revenue that we were, that we received from the law library.
So that's why we cut it out of last budget. But then we found out we got this, so we got to put it back, correct?
Cut it out of last budget?
Yeah, then we just eliminate that, just the library fund, just what was-
We haven't eliminated it. It, it actually ran in the negative last year. This, this is preventing it from running it in the negative.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, Commonwealth attorney doesn't use the Law Library, correct?
That's for the attorneys that are using it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does, does it get a lot of usage, or do you have any idea?
I really don't know.
Okay.
But we don't have a choice for another couple of years.
It doesn't get enough usage, uh, what we currently charge for it doesn't pay-
It doesn't pay for us, okay.
We, we can book in the-
Well, is it something we're required to provide?
I have to, I have to put in, um, all certificates.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Nick, for explaining this. Do I have a motion to accept the section B of the consent agenda?
I so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Committee appointments is the next on the agenda. I think we have, oh gosh. We have the IDA that still is, got two vacancies. Planning Commission has two, Mount Rogers Community Service, Public Service Authority, which they took, well, I think Mr. Webb's still got to fill his position in the PSA, is that correct?
Correct.
Social Services, Hal Hanks is, was filled. Dr. Littrell filled that one with Chris Phelps, correct?
Yep.
So there's still a vacancy for Joyce Buns, and then the Solid Waste Authority is Sam Dixon and Benny Robinson. Do any of these that are on, do y'all know if there are any of them are still wanting to remain?
Sam said he would like to stay on it when he was here the other day.
Okay.
Yeah, Sam's willing to continue to serve. Benny's position is still-
Can we advertise these, these positions ever, ever so often that people are interested in being on any board whatsoever, they can apply, and then we can, I know, we, we just do that?
Do you want it in the paper?
No, on a website we do.
The new website can do a better job of it.
Yeah, as we talk about it.
But, yeah.
Hopefully they, they put it in the paper.
So we could go ahead and reappoint Sam, is that correct?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Could I have a motion to reappoint Sam Dixon to the Solid Waste Authority? Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion. Sam, Sam attends and does a good job.
Mr. Webb can start the voting, please?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And we also want to reappoint Mr. Truitt to the A Corridor. And I guess he's willing to accept it since it says reappoint.
It's called, it's called Virginia, Dr. Old, that's not a law address, or something. Yes, I'm reading.
I need a motion to reappoint Mr. Truitt to the, I'm just gonna say A Corridor, 'cause it's easier for me to remember that.
I so move.
And second by Mr. Littrell. Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Vote yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you all very much. Next item on the- Next item on the agenda is the resolution for the highway, Veterans Memorial Highway. Mr. Truitt, you want to discuss that, or?
Sure. The driving force behind the request, the request here is to rename the entire, not rename, but to give the honorary name, Veterans Memorial Highway to US Route 52, all the way from the North Carolina in the south, up to the West Carolina to the north. The man who, I get about two digits a month from a man named Clyde Easter, who's up into his 90s and he is a Purple Heart recipient, recipient, and he also got another decoration, I can't remember which one, but he fought in Anzio Beach in World War II and served his country with distinction and he really, really wants the road to rename that. And we can put, I went through all the background work with the, with the doc and got estimates where we can put, say, three signs in each direction, say, one beginning on end, kind of shift in each direction. They said somewhere $2,503,000 or something. Mr. Easter says that either he personally or the DFW will have to pay for it, but we, of course, as part of our resolution process, would have to say that we're willing to do it. So this is just B Doc's standard resolution where we request their committee to go ahead and give the ceremonial name to the stretcher road. And then there's a whole bunch of stuff I'll have to do afterwards to make sure it actually happens and the signs get put up and all that. But what you all would be doing today, if you so choose, would be passing that resolution, which is the first step in the process.
I'll speak on behalf of it from a standpoint that every state has goods and bads. And if you go into West Virginia, they have, they have named road after road, be it World War II veterans or whatever, and most of the bridges, they, everything has a name and a sign and it's very impressive. And I, for that reason, I'll move that the county authorize to pass into this resolution. I think it needs to be done and it'll be there when we're all done.
Mr. Martin made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do I have any other discussion on it? Take a vote, Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
I vote yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next one is the law enforcement appreciation day resolution. Once again, Mr. Truitt, do you want to speak to that, or?
Well, that is a result of a, a national movement that was really started by a police support organization called COPS. So they, I think back in 2015, started expressing their appreciation for the police on this particular day and they've asked localities and governments across the country to join in and lend their voice to the appreciation and the support. Given the job that you all do for us and the fairly thankless nature of it, I would say that it's literally the least we can do to save things once a year and so that's the purpose for this resolution.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. The thankless job and I thank you all greatly for the service you give to our county citizens.
COPS concerns the police surrounding its families and people that it's beloved.
That's great.
It's very true.
I'm moving that we accept this resolution supporting National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day on January the 9th.
I have a motion by Dr. Littrell to accept this, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb, and we'll start the vote. Any other discussion? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you all once again, that's, I think that's great. The next is a PSA amendment to an agreement with the City of Mount Airy, is that, that's correct?
Yes.
I'll let you explain once again, if that's okay.
Sure. This is an amendment, basically, that is a change to the agreement between the Carroll County PSA and the City of Mount Airy, which was originally signed in 2012. And essentially, it is giving us the right to buy more water for less money. I mean, it's that simple. Currently, we can buy something like, what is it? 9,999 gallons a day and now we can go up to 200,000 gallons a day, up to a maximum of 600,000. And we'll be able to buy it for about half the price we were paying.
Yeah, it'll be up to 6 million.
Up to 6 million.
I know, I'm not. So the rate's lower and just for an example, if we just looked at Exit 1 for last year, what we spent in water, it would be as saving as over $5,000, just for that small investment. It's a savings to us and we can purchase that more water, 30,000 every 10.
So in addition to the savings right off the bat, if we were to get additional economic development opportunities around Exit 1, water would no longer be a factor that would even happen, which it has been in the past, I understand. But, I mean, I don't see a downside to it myself, but that's what it is.
I think it's a very positive thing from a standpoint. It puts Carroll County, Virginia cooperating with North Carolina and Surry County, and I think in the future it only strengthens our hand for economic development. Could benefit both states.
It's better than meeting each other's brains, though.
Do I have a motion to accept this amendment?
I'll make a motion to accept that amendment.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second in the town. Any other discussion?
I'll just note that PSA passed this earlier, but required the board to coincide with it.
Start the voting with Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Abstain.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
I vote yes. I vote yes. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I might interrupt the flow of the meeting. There is one additional resolution that didn't make it onto the paper, which came up very late in the day.
The House Bill 2222?
Yes, sir.
Resolution?
Yeah.
And I, since you are knowledgeable of it and have talked with them, I'll let you explain what it's about.
This is a bill in support of a, excuse me, this is a resolution in support of a bill that came sponsored by Delegate James Moorefield. And basically, this bill will give several localities that were in the former coal and tobacco areas new economic development tools, speaking of ways that maybe can beat the brains out of North Carolina. This will give us new, new tax credits that we can offer to new businesses and will allow us to sweeten deals on an individual discretionary basis through our IDA with our own funds here in the county, which we're currently really not allowed to do without having some other form of economic deal in place. It will, it allows us to partner with richer counties where we can trade credits back and forth, or say, we could work with Fairfax County and they could get some tax credits while we get an actual physical presence of a job creating entity, or vice versa. You know, basically, and it just has to do with where the economic prospects decide to put their business. But it gives us a whole bunch of new tools. And we, just today, were added to this legislation, this proposed legislation, which I think is great news. So we now are joining our neighbors in Galax and in Grayson County and in Boynton County and actually, they also live with County. I was glad to see that we're on the same page because these are the counties we work with every day when we go to market that region. So to me, I am very excited about this legislation and I really hope it passes. And that's why I and Delegate Moorefield are both asking that we pass this resolution and pass it along to our representatives, Senator Stanley, Senator Silverfield, and Delegate Campbell, to make sure that they are pressing for it just as hard as everybody else.
If I, when I read this, when you mentioned it, doesn't it offer some tax reduction or to even the employees that are working in the?
Yes, it actually, it has benefited both to the companies as well as some to potential employees. And you can actually kind of flip around how that works, you know, depending on what makes the most sense. But yes, this, this in addition to attracting management teams and also attracting employees, which are a part of the state's import, it just be able to come back, build our industrial base back up. One besides the fact that this is a great place to live, is we want to make it a great place to work.
Gives us some good lucrative incentive, I think.
So, yeah, and they're really working hard on this. So the summary of the bill that's on the General Assembly's website is really very interesting. I would recommend that you all check it out, but it's, it's one of the most creative pieces of legislation on the economic side that's come down in several years, I think. So that's what, this resolution is in favor of that bill, House Bill 222. Senator Stanley on the Senate side is sponsoring a super piece of legislation. He added this to it before. So next time you see him, tell him thanks.
I guess I need to get a motion for us to accept this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Mr. McCraw. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Dr. Littrell. And any other discussion? Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb?
Ah, yes.
Mr. McCraw?
I vote yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you all for that. And the next item is the budget discussion.
How would you like to engage this, Mr. Chairman? Nicky has put together a, an initial pass, a process, and some goals, and we can certainly start there as a point of departure.
That's, if that's fine with the rest of the board, I'm fine with that.
Okay, I think we want to use some of this time to determine what the board would like to see the process look like. If we want to make some significant changes than we've done historically in the past, we're going to have a budget committee like we normally have had in the past of two or three, or if we're going to be having the entire board work in the budget work sessions. So really, we want to gauge the preference of the board and we'll kind of determine what that will look like going forward.
Any comments?
I recently made the motion a couple of boards ago, that we go to a more streamlined budget process. And the board appointed two members and they met with the school board and Nicky was involved. And advantage wise, it sort of nailed down some things and it came back to the board. And anything will work if you want it to, nothing will work if you don't want it to. So, and way back a long time ago, the board used to, it'd be like a group of six and we did it like sitting here and discussed it and so forth. And I remember spending hours and hours and hours on it. And when we finished, the budget had gone up $15,000, so we didn't save too much money. But the, I, I think it's been suggested, and you guys need to jump in here, okay?
Soon as you don't.
That the Nicky and Steve, the Administrator's Office, that you can be the point person on talking to some of these departments and so forth and seeing if there's some common ground and then report back to the board and then the board go from there. I'm not opposed to all six of us doing it and would rather just one person doing it and we could all blame that person for the budget, okay? And I'd like, you know-
Well, whether it's all six, or it's two, or it's three, you know, the way, budgets have the same processes, you know, you have to identify what it is you're going to do and then you have to identify what, you know, how you're going to do it, what it's going to cost, and you review some of that stuff. You look for all the places where people didn't earn money, which they do. I mean, whatever mechanism makes you feel the most comfortable, that we have taken a good, honest look at the budget is, is fine with us. But I mean, basically, whether it's six, 10, 15, two, it's all one person's fault. The similar steps are going to, you can't avoid going through them. And I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
I just think the whole board should look at it. Number one, I come on and got on the Budget Committee and still to this day, I don't know everything is known about the budget. I think it's helpful for each board member to be on the Budget Committee and have it in front of the folks who may wish to opine when we make a decision on the budget. And we learn, especially new gentlemen on the board, will learn where we're spending money, where money goes, where the revenue comes in and things like that. So I think that's a, to me, would be the most appropriate way, at least, because we've gone back and forth, I've looked back for years, went back, we had four members, we had two members and we had the full board. So it's, it's across the board, you know, but that would be my recommendation is to go for the full board.
I would like to just make one request. If you want to have the entire board on the Budget Committee, can we maybe set up a secondary Board of Supervisors meeting at 6:00 after, for anybody who's working in this format during the whole budget cycle, maybe the fourth Monday?
I agree with you. I agree with that, yes, I do.
We definitely need to add more days. We need to start this, somewhere this, later on this month and start those days. And that doesn't mean that every board member has to be here each and every time. But if we have three board members, then we have to make public notes, correct? So, you know, that would be, if a board member doesn't want to participate, that would be up to them.
Even if you have two members, but it's a committee of the board, you have to notify the press.
In the past, we've had folks that wanted to be on the committee, were not able to because we had it limited to two, so that's-
I have to side a little bit with what Rex is saying. I do like the idea of all of us serving on the Budget Committee and that goes back to, we're here to represent the citizens of the county and each one of us should have a responsibility and have that accountability, that we need to take that and be, and stand up and be that part. So when the budget, questioned about the budget, we all know about the budget. We know what's going on, we know why it's happened and why it's been done that way. And I think that that's the important part of, all of us serving is part of it.
I'm doing too much talking tonight, but in 1975, when I was a whole lot skinnier, I went on the board and then we were spending $17,000 a year, the Strickland Brothers were running the landfill and people were screaming that, that we're getting robbed, robbed. And now it's over a million dollars a year for that little landfill. And the problem with six is sometimes you get too nitpicky. I'll always remember us spending two hours on a dang $200 typewriter for the County Administrator's Office and, I mean, and I don't think we buy any typewriters now, but I, you know, I-
If we hit six yes votes and nobody's happy, I guess we did it right.
You know, it's, but I do know this and I did not enjoy last budget. You know, it's, but I do know this, and I did not enjoy last budget where it appeared that we had cut out $600,000, and that was great, but then we had, like, all of these extra unbudgeted expense items, and that went up a million dollars. Well, so, our $600 savings saved a lot of money, but we ended up with a bu, big budget increase, and I, I don't like that. And I, you know, and I'd like, I'd like to see us build up our surpluses in the budget, try to cut some, as many, as expenses as we can, and by the same token, improve the revenue situation and so forth. But again, there, there's, there ain't no perfect way, you know? The, be it six, or two, or whatever, I've, I've been at both ends, and it's, you know...
And just to make you aware, you haven't adopted the Budget Calendar, it's scheduled for tonight. We have not adopted the Budget Calendar as of yet, but the process is still moving along. We've requested the CIP from the department heads and from the Constitutional Offices, they are due back this week, and so, we're going to keep the process moving, but have a process that the board is, is happy with. So, I guess my question to you would, would it be okay just to try and schedule a budget meeting on maybe January 22nd, the 4th Monday? Is that a good day for the board?
That's, I don't have a problem with that.
January 22nd.
And we'll also use it as an educational tool for the new board members because it's a big document, and it's, it's going to be a steep learning curve for the two new members. So, we'll try and make that as an educational session and a scheduling of meetings, basically.
Does the budget lend itself to grouping into certain categories that you could look at, you know, like every month or something? To me, a, a six-member committee is a little awkward, but if you had a smaller number, that could, can go over portions of the budget, and then report back to the whole board and kind of get the general consensus of everybody at that point.
It's a good question and a valid question. We have nine sections of expenditures, okay? Public safety, judicial administration, general, and financial accounting. There are several, there are nine sections, basically, and you have all of the revenues. But I think if we're going to try and use this as an educational process also for the new board members, I would like it to be kind of all encompassing, but basically kind of directed at certain groups of expenditures in one evening.
I'm only looking at the budget by Spence type of call.
Supporting Dr. Littrell's comment, the, I'm not sure it's limited to just two new members getting an education, because there's so many budget items that, and, and what I've seen is, when you get a large number, and you're looking at the budget, what is this for $100,000 on you? What is it? You know, and so it goes into a 10-minute explanation, and white game about and so forth, and, I mean, I don't, I know, but with, if you get six members, I'm telling you, you better be looking at several working meetings and...
So, why don't we look at revenues? Because number one, revenue is going to determine what our expenditure is going to be. We got to determine what realistic revenue is going to be, and stick to that. And either go, start with guidelines that we're not going to increase the property rate or items like that, and then start looking at the revenue. That would be my suggestion, first thing.
Do that.
If we have time, go to the next step. If that works for you.
It, it works for me. It's a little early on the revenue just because of our baseline projection, we're, we're just right outside of the tax deadline in December. So, typically, you know, usually forecasting revenue is enlarged, but we can definitely do that. And we're trying to incorporate this year, the treasurer and those discussions too in the Commission of Revenue, so I can try and schedule with them if you'd like for January 22nd meeting.
But what you could do, acknowledging the truth of everything Nicky just said, because it is untrue, but you could say, well, we know how much we build, so you could make a judgment about what it maybe ought to be, but that might not be what we're really going to collect.
Yeah.
But that might be a good conversation to have also, because the difference between those two numbers should be well understood.
Do you feel like that Benita would have a good idea of what its trending, the collection would be? Okay.
And the other thing probably to ask is, when does the Constitutional budgets come in from the state?
I don't think we'll have those until...
Will they be the same?
Maybe, maybe.
It will be late because it's the new cycle.
So, that's why we need to look at revenues.
So, do, I get the feeling we want to just kind of hold off till after we have this budget meeting on the 22nd before we decide if we want to do a committee or an entire board? Is that what I'm feeling?
And what time would that 20th, January 22nd?
6:00.
6:00.
6:00. So, we'll have a, we'll have a budget meeting on January 22nd here in the boardroom at 6:00?
So...
We'll go from there. Any other comments on the budget? All right, the next item was board goals. Have you, have we, have we established board goals? Have we thought about board goals, any of you, or?
I, I think our board goals have to primarily center around budget and surplus and, and those kind of things.
I don't have anything prepared, but I think that it's safe to say that everybody here who lives in and loves Carroll County would like to see some success with the economic development. That would help us improve our fiscal health, attract new businesses and new residents. I think everybody would want to see the financial health of the county continue to improve. And despite all the dark words from our county time before last, the fact of the matter is that our cash flow is significantly better than it had been, and if nothing horrible happens, we're going to end up the year in June better than we have been in a while. Now, that's not as good as we need to be. And where we come out of this exercise going through the budget, which is going to be rough, it's never easy, the decisions are hard, but whatever we decide together is going to, we hope, improve the health of the county, and that's got to be, if economic development is number one, that's got to be number 1.5. One thing I hear about over and over again, and I'm a little frustrated that I haven't been able to do more, is thought management, but that is sort of directly supportive of those first two goals. And even though it's kind of specific, I think that it's broad enough and important enough that I'm willing to throw it out there as one of my goals, and I, I hope I could have some success. I, I wish I could guarantee some success, but we got to find some partners I'll work with. And then, other than that, just, just planning, planning for the way things are going to be when, you know, things continue to change, whether we like it or not. So, we just need to be realistic about the future and try to face up to those things before it runs over us, so planning for the future. Those, those are things I would suggest just that we could all embrace, but there are many others.
Perhaps we could work on, each individual could submit something down next meeting and then kind of...
I like that.
There's a, Jason's got a thing, we can share stuff like that, like goals that could be passed back and forth.
Yes, we set that up, yes.
And that way, I could see what Dr. Littrell was putting in, and I'd say, yeah, that's, that's what I like.
It's something he kind of showed me and Rex a little bit today, so I think it worked great. I think, I like, I like Dr. Littrell's idea that we all can come up with some board goals that we would like to have and, and share them with each other, and that way we can come together and maybe try to come up with a definitive list of what our true board goals may be. Any other comments on the board goals? If not, we want to move on to tax collections.
I don't have a report from the treasurer, she has committed to give it to him tomorrow. We'll be happy to share that with the press. We waited if we did it, but I don't have one for tonight.
That's fine. Next item is citizens' time. Do we have any? Okay.
Some of you might know me, I don't know, everybody knows me as Farmer John. I, I'm the only vendor at the new Hillsfield Farmers Market. It's an important part of what we're trying to accomplish, fill up some stores and so forth. I operate Silver Maples Farm here in Carroll County. Everybody knows me as Farmer John, and I am the lone produce vendor. I have nothing but the highest regard and respect for the Brady Sisters, Debbie and Donna, who have worked extremely hard to create a most impressive farmers' market operation. Occasionally, I purchase wholesale produce from them, and they do the same for me. However, I feel I must disagree regarding their opposition of wine sales store at our new visitor center, now located at the retail farmers' market facility. I'm amazed there's actually any opposition to such a great idea, all right? First of all, the rule against alcohol was originally put in place for a valid reason 25 years ago, to prevent, to prevent the possible sale of illegal alcohol at the farmers' market. That was 25 years ago, and times have changed. As far as suggesting wine sales should not be in the Anderson County government, all hard liquor sold in Virginia must be purchased at state-run liquor stores by law. To the best of my knowledge, none of our state-run liquor stores can be held liable for any consequences related to the sale of their products. As far as church groups being turned off to visiting the farmers' market because of wine sales at the visitor center, Jesus turned water into wine, and wine was served at the Last Supper. When my wife and I receive holy communion at our church, we are served wine, which represents the blood of Christ. Wine is available at Food Lion, Dollar Discount, Walmart, and many other such stores. I know of no Christian that boycotts any of those stores because they happen to sell wine. Our relocated visitor center is now something every resident of Carroll County can be extremely proud of, adding a nice display of regional wines, but add another layer of excellence to what is already on display there. You will find no items made in China or other cheap flea market-type items. Everything on display is the work of very talented local craftsmen and artisans. Many tourists from other states and counties visit the Carroll County Tourist Center, and would just love to be able to purchase our fine regional wines to take home with them, many to stop their wine sellers. Amanda Paris, the tourist center director, has done a very commendable job creating a county visitor center that we can all be extremely proud of. The passion she puts into that visitor center is very evident, and to insinuate that she wants to create a saloon-type environment at our fine visitor center is like a slap in the face and far from the truth. Also, the insinuation that the tourist center discriminates against any legitimate farm in Carroll County is also far from factual, as any productive farm can apply as a vendor at the farmers' market. We have several fine wineries in Carroll County, all of whom would, would, all of whom work extremely hard to create their products. There are also a few upcoming small-scale wineries being created. All could be represented as part of a nice regional wine display at our very, very impressive visitor center. It is my hope that three or four of the supposed 980 farms in Carroll County, I think some of them might be harvesting tax breaks, will come forth and participate in our new downtown farmers' market this year, as I am the only produce vendor there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is supervisors' time. We'll start off with Mr. Webb down there. New boy on the block.
New kid on the block.
New kid on the block.
All very fascinating to me. Didn't have a clue what I was getting into when I did it, but I did it anyway. I look very forward to serving Carroll County. I look very forward to helping this board get Carroll County back going like everybody's been talking about tonight, as far as the budget and economic development. Got a lot to learn. I got a lot to learn, and I intend to learn it, I intend to work, I intend to help people, especially the Lawford District of who I represent. And that's about all I've got right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCraw, the other new kid on the block.
Thank y'all for coming tonight and taking part in the meeting, and I'd like to congratulate Robbie for our new chairman, and Rex for past chairman, and I'd like to thank everybody for answering the questions I've asked today, I've asked quite a few. And I apologize to y'all for interrupting the meeting, I evidently played in the brunch too much. Sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Hill, do you? Mr. Hill deferred to you, Mr. Martin, so you're next.
Well, thank you. The, I think the class on budget that Rex and Robbie took is already showing fruits. And in fact, I about got fired up, I think I'll try to sign up for the state-sponsored course on county budgets and so forth. But the, I think it's evident that the board is, and has for a long time, tried to get a handle on our budget, be it expense or, or revenue, and it's just hard to do, especially when things keep popping up that you don't have any warning for. Several years ago, the county administrator went over the entire meeting and, and directed everything, and the, the board of supervisors were like the little cat that's in the back of the window where his head is shaking back and forth. And, and that didn't go over too well with the public. I'm, I'm glad to see that we're involving, instead of the county administrator and Nicky being unseen and behind the budget and so forth, that we, we involve you and get reports from you. I think, to me, that was refreshing to hear a little different presentation and involve them, and I think it's good. The, somebody asked me, what do you think of them two new supervisors? And I, and I said, well, hello, they'll be better than I am. The, my grandpa, years ago, when he was like 90 years old, my brother and I were a lot stronger and younger, and we went out, and we had pulled down these big trees and some small trees in the field beside his house, and we were going to cut those up into wood for his stove. And the problem was, the wood would pinch, and, and so, it pinched the saw and so forth. So, my brother suggested, Bob, why don't you pick up the end of some of these logs and I can saw them off? And so, two back operations later, the, and, and that was, it worked, but it had a cost to it. And how many know what a cant hook is in here? Anybody? Okay. Grandpa gets off the porch, and him 90 years old, and he comes out there to my brother and I in the field, and he, and his statement was, nah, boys, you're not doing it right. And... And he takes that hook, and a can hook is, it looks like a matic handle but bigger, and it's got a swivel hook that comes off of it with a real sharp point. And you can put that in against a log and turn it. And it took him about five minutes to show us how to make it easier on, on us. Instead of manhandling and picking up logs, he would take the hook and he would say, like, the land is never, never perfectly leveled and the wood, it points is above the dirt and rocks. So grandpa showed us how, don't cut, don't cut the log all the way into, cut it down three quarters and keep going that way. And eventually you will get to a point where you saw the whole log off because of the load place. And then he would just, the 90-year-old man would roll that log over. And it made it a whole lot easier. I learned that day that regardless of who is speaking and so forth, it behooves all of us to listen carefully to even a 90-year-old man that, that couldn't pick up 50 pounds of weight, but he's got, he knows a better way of doing it. And I'm glad we got two new folks. I miss the other two guys, but I appreciate the views and, and input from you guys and everybody on this board and everybody here. And Farmer John, I appreciated your comments. And the more comments we get, I think it makes the board stronger and it makes the county better. And end of my 20-minute sermon, okay?
Dr. Littrell?
I had a grandma story, but I ain't going to talk about it.
Why grandma?
I'd like to welcome our two new board members as well, and I also want to make sure they understand anything I can do to try to help you, which I know very little, but anything I can help, just ask them. I'll be more than happy to share whatever little bit I know. And I would like to encourage both of you to consider taking the Certified Supervisors Course, which Robbie and Rex both have just, you finished, haven't you?
Not quite.
Not quite. But it takes about 18 months to get through it.
It does.
But it really is very helpful and it talks about budget and finance and economic development, all different subjects. And so, if you want more information about how it's the next scheduled course, you can ask one of these two guys because I'm not sure exactly when it is. But I had the opportunity to do that when I first got on the board and it really helped tremendously. But anyway, welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The budget, to me, is at very best a guesstimate. I mean, it gives us a roadmap of what we want to do, but as we know, it's a living document and no matter how well you forecast your revenues or your expenses, it changes along the way. So I think all we can do is do the best we can and kind of get a handle on what's going on. But anyway, it's very important to have that good roadmap as good as we can get it. A couple of things I want to bring up. One of those is something I've talked about for years, is the Southwest Virginia Training Center. We're in the 11th hour now. It's scheduled to close in June of 2018, which happens to be this year, in less than six months. And there'll be another push at the general assembly level to try to extend the, the time it's open. But in the event that fails, I think we need to have a Plan B. That's a, that's a really nice facility, and I know other locations who have lost their training centers have done well before we're doing it, gotten an economic development option plan to see what can be done with that property, whether it's declared state surplus or if a private company wants to get in there for some, some idea. But I think we need to pursue both directions, trying to keep it open as well as trying to figure out what to do with it if it should close. And we don't have a lot of time there. Steve touched on it just a little bit when he was talking about board goals, but I've had more discussions with my constituents and pavers gap about a section that's a dead cell coverage. And it basically is about two feet from my house all the way to the parkway. And it looks like to me there are a lot of people that live up through there, and you see them stopped at Oakland Church and Oakland School making phone calls before they go on home where they can't get any cell coverage. And I know cell companies or private enterprise that we have very little, if any, influence on, but I think we need to do the best we can and try to encourage somebody to come out and put a cell tower. And along with that is high-speed internet, which is another problem. And we've got that tower at Oakland School that if you were within line of sight of that tower, you could get high-speed internet if you could get a provider to provide the service off of that tower. And again, that's private enterprise, but, you know, years ago, one of you was on, talking about you didn't get, you were talking about you didn't get indoor plumbing until the 60s or something like that.
My grandma.
Your grandma. I mean, it used to be you had rural co-ops and things to try to get the infrastructure into these areas that are underserved. And I think we need to look at every possible way of getting cell coverage in these parts of the county that have none and also high-speed internet. That's just part of the future. I mean, that's part of the present now. It's not future any longer, but that's what almost everybody expects and certainly business is expecting. So I think that should be really up there on top of our board goals. And thank you, Robbie, and good job on being chairman.
Thank you. Rex, you want to go now?
Might as well. I want to thank Dr. Littrell for reminding us about the Southwest Virginia Training Center. It's, it's very important to this community. One other thing, I have a presentation to make.
Bob, would you step forward, please?
Is that bottle of wine?
I've been to the farmer's market, but I can't believe this. Back last year, it became evident that Bob didn't talk a lot.
Talked a lot.
Didn't have anything to say. And we said, what can we do to bring Bob out of his shell? He says, hey, I think Robbie came up and said, let's add it, let's make him chairman. So we really, if you're going to get your grandma, we really appreciate your work and chairman. Might help you with the log cutting. Use that there. Pay him, get some attention if you didn't have the board. We paid you.
Go hit yourself.
That's right. You better put this back in the bag, don't you? We appreciate your work.
I wish you had to give me this bottle of cheap wine down here.
That's from Chateau, West Virginia.
Thank you. I, I talk a lot. Good thing is that it tends to get things out on the table because people say, hot darn, that knothead, here he goes again. And then somebody says, well, why don't we do, and it, it does bring out ideas. I think the board's got me over beside Dr. Littrell for a purpose, you know, the, and that's to keep me under control, I think. So, but thank you, Rex.
Anything else?
That's it. That's all I have.
I thank you everyone for being here tonight. I think this board, I think we have a good group that can work good together. They've got the best interest at, the best of this county at heart is what we're after, what's best for this county and to make this county a better place. I really appreciate Tom's comments about Southwest Virginia Training Center because it is important. And it is the last hour. It definitely is the last hour. I like the ideas of doing a Plan B, coming up with something, seeing what the plans are for the facility, what their, what the state's planning on doing with it. And I live not very far from Dr. Littrell. I live across the road. We can see our houses from each other. And the cell phone service he's talking about is 100% correct. You go, you go 100 feet past our house and there is no service whatsoever till you get back to fancy gap. And I think that's a huge concern. It's, it's a safety concern for people that's traveling the parkway that don't have, if something happens, they have no way of reaching anyone. You know, used to, we didn't worry about that, but that's something that's out there now and most everybody carries a cell phone. And if you don't have service, you're, you're, you're in a bad spot. I think it's, I think it's even bad for our deputies that are traveling that area. I know they have radios and sometimes radios just may not work the best either. So, but I think that's something we need to really push and, and then go back to the brought, to the internet service. I actually am in the process of changing internet service right now because Century Link is just not, not providing what they say they can provide. I called the other day to get some information and the guy said, well, I've got you on the front, do you want to upgrade to 10 megabytes, you know, of service? And I said, well, I would upgrade, but it don't do me no good. He said, well, it says you can get 10. I said, no, not at my house you can't get 10. I said, you all advertise it and you sell it to people as that, but you're not honoring what you, what you're doing. So I think that's something we need to work on also. I do thank everyone again, thank staff for what you're doing. I think that our, our budget plan is, is going to come together and we can work on our budget for this county and try to make things much better. Anyone don't have anything else, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.
I was going to say that you want to recess until the next meeting. We'll see you later.